We have six seniors here, I think. Count six here.
Put our hands up on seniors.
So these guys have been diehards for us for a couple of years now and all the credit goes to them, obviously. So I just get the privilege of coaching these good guys. So they're hard workers, good guys, and we had a fun year. So, well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Let me quickly read this. "Special recognition certificate for the city of Des Moines issues this certificate of special recognition to the Grandview Christian Class 1A Boys Basketball State Champions and head coach Dave Stubbs. Grandview Christian Boys Team defeated Auburnette in the championship game to win their third consecutive state 1A state championship. The Thunder beat the Pirates in the Class 1A championship game to cap a 26-1 season. The Grandview Christian Boys Basketball Team is the only team in central Iowa in any class to win a three-peat championship with a combined three-year record of 78-3." So to the players and the staff who all worked so hard and to the parents, by the way, that persevered and supported them all the way through the season, not only this year, but for the last three years. And by the way, you better find some new players. We're expecting another one. All right. So the city of Des Moines joins in recognizing and congratulating the Grandview Christian Boys Basketball Team for your Class 1A Basketball State Championship and presented on this 22nd day of April 2019. Let's all give them one more go. We gotta get a picture. We gotta get a picture. We gotta get a proud dad in here, too. Come on. Let's go, Joe. So, David Yon. Where's David? Come on. We've got a very special day today, and I'm gonna let David read it off, and then we got a proclamation to follow. And I will do that, but I want you to bring not only all your staff up, but I think we've got a number of folks that are gonna assist in plannings and other things. If we can bring the whole team up, I see some that I even recognize back here. This group of three over here I spend holidays with also, so... All right. David?
Great. So I'm David Yon, City Forester, and today we're celebrating the beginning of our Arbor Day season. The official Arbor Day is this Friday coming, but we've already got events underway. And I've got a few guests I want to introduce today. Just stand and be recognized. Sam Carroll from Des Moines Waterworks Foundation. Thank you for... Sam involved me early on to make some assessments on the property and make sure that they weren't losing some of the more valuable crabapple trees over there. And kudos to you. Thanks for caring about trees, Sam. I'm gonna ask our urban forestry project manager Shane McQuillan to come and talk to us a few sentences about Tiny Trees Program.
Hi there. I'm Shane McQuillan with the City Forestry Department. This is our third year of giving away tiny trees. I hope you've all ordered yours. The first year was about 6,000, second year 7,000, and this year we'll be giving away 9,000 trees this Saturday with the help of volunteers and the like.
I got his numbers here. That's 22,000 trees we didn't have three years ago. So kudos to our director Jonathan Gano for dreaming up that idea and Shane for putting the program together. We are honored to have in our midst, she's been volunteering in our forestry division for seven years now, maybe eight, Jeanette Hario. She's going to be recognized. And to do that, the Iowa Urban Forestry Coordinator from the DNR, Emma Hannigan, is gonna come and present that to Jeanette.
Thanks, David. The Iowa Urban Tree Council is a group of professionals throughout the state that advocate for urban forestry. And every year we get to give great awards. And this year our outstanding volunteers from the city of Des Moines, Jeanette Hario. And it all started when Jeanette requested a tree for her ride away in front of her home. And I believe that was in 2012. And she's been volunteering every morning, almost every morning, since then for the city of Des Moines. And she's been doing some great things, putting together volunteers for tiny trees, as Shane was just talking about. She's an Iowa water volunteer and trained. She also is part of treekeepers and helps all of the treekeepers out there. She's helped with the externs that we've had that are helping for the master plan. And she also has put together numerous presentations, conferences for the city of Des Moines. And we're just so honored to congratulate Jeanette today. You're an outstanding volunteer, and the city of Des Moines recognizes you, and so does the Iowa Urban Tree Council.
Anything else?
Yes.
All right, all right.
All righty. This year, we started a brand-new program. This is hot off the press. It's called Growing Futures. It's with our key partner, Trees Forever. And to explain that program to us is their freshly minted, newly hired Growing Futures Coordinator, Carrie Sorrell. Please come and tell us about Growing Futures.
Hi, everyone. Growing Futures is a partnership between the city of Des Moines and Trees Forever to hire Des Moines teens to plant and manage and take care of trees in the city. We're really excited for this program. Our first day was on Saturday. We made the kids work in that beautiful weather, but they were lugging trees and water and everything all across Evelyn K. Davis Park. And they got a real introduction into the work that we do outside. But it was a really exciting day. You could just tell by the end of the day, they felt really good about the trees they had planted. And our goal this spring is to plant about 300 trees with them. So they're just getting started. We're really grateful to the city of Des Moines and all of our sponsors who have made this program possible. The kids, I think, are gonna have a really amazing time. And it's a really cool program to come to Des Moines. So, thanks.
And as tradition for us to give our mayor, we consider him a very green mayor, and we always present him with a Tree City USA hat. We are 27-years Tree City USA designation, so congratulations to us. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, Natalie. For anybody that's wondering, she's my granddaughter, so this is Ms. Natalie Locke, and we're glad to have her down. She's gonna be part of planting trees this year. So you start 'em young, you know, and then we'll have a lot of trees by the time she gets our age, right? So, any rate, proclamation reads as follows. "Des Moines strives to maintain a healthy natural environment for its citizens and its guests. Urban trees help the city of Des Moines achieve the guide Des Moines goals of sustainable community, livable community, and upgraded urban infrastructure. And whereas trees help the city of Des Moines achieve and maintain its star community status by providing climate adaptation, greenhouse gas mitigation, green infrastructure, outdoor air and water quality, and enhanced business retention and development. And whereas the citizens of Des Moines are embracing the opportunity to increase the urban canopy through the Growing Futures planting project, and whereas the city of Des Moines has been recognized as a Tree City USA for 27 straight years by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue our reforestation and management programs toward ensuring the future of our urban forest trees. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of our city council and the citizens of Des Moines, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 26, 2019, as Arbor Day and urge the citizens of Des Moines to recognize Arbor Day and to support efforts to plant, maintain, and celebrate our urban trees and woodlands." Let's give all these people a great, great celebration. All right. Let's give everybody a big hand. Ben, where are you? As all the, our tree forces are leaving, I want to thank them again, but I also want to thank our Parks Department. We have a great set of parks in and around Des Moines. We've got a lot of trails that so many people use every single year, and we keep working on them, expanding them. And one of the events that helps support that is the mayor's ride-and-run. And this year, I'll tell you, we started at the ballpark Saturday, and we had a great event. And I think we're seeing some of it up here. You're just seeing a piece of it because a major part of the group was towards the north. Here's the Dream Team. Here we are, just about ready to kick it off. We had some of our council down. Linda Westergaard and Chris Coleman, both were down. They were participants. And Linda did pretty well, riding along. I didn't do quite as well. I got a flat tire and had to have my granddaughter come pick me up and go get it fixed. But it's such a great program, because all the proceeds and the entry of participants into it all goes to improve our trails. And we now have sponsors as well, right, Ben?
Right.
That are helping us do this as well. And Ben, why don't you run through quickly who our sponsors were this year. But we are forever expanding it, and it's, we're so thankful for all of our citizens and their support for the trails, whether they're walking or they're running or they're biking. This is such a great amenity that so many people, not only the people that live in Des Moines, but all of our visitors, they say, wow, how do you guys keep doing this and maintaining this and expanding it every time we come? And some of those are all these people in the media that follow around, some of these people that think they want to be the next leader of the free world. And they come into Des Moines and see all the great things that have been happening over the last number of three-to-four-year cycles that they get to see it. So it's sort of an interesting window. And one of the things we get great, great pleasure in presenting and pride in having is our trail system and our parks. So quickly, Ben.
Real quickly, this year we had over 600 paid participants, and it grossed over $20,000 of revenue for the trail system. That money is well-needed. Thank you. And these events can't be done without great sponsors. As you might guess, our biking community likes to stop and have a refreshment along the way. So the three sponsors are Confluence Brewery, Triangle Tap, and Captain Royce. So we want to thank them for their sponsorships to help pull this proceeds together, and we'll keep working. And the Iowa Cubs was our host sponsor, so thank you. And we're at 63 miles of paved trail. We've got a lot of connections to still make, and with help like this, we'll get more done.
And for all those that are wondering, Mike Gardner always asked me to say this, and that there are still tickets available if anybody needs a ticket to a ballgame. So thank them for their participation and support. And it was a great place to start the event. And we kicked it off and moved out from there, and it was a great day. The weather was wonderful. So we're looking for more participation next year. So everybody, write it down. All right. Yeah, yeah. So you just abstained from those? I got it. All right. Welcome to our April 22th Des Moines City Council meeting. We want to thank you all for coming. We did our proclamations, so thank you for your patience in that. But we are really proud of this city and some of the things that everybody works towards to make this place a great place to be. And congratulate those who've had great success in and around, and our citizens for Des Moines who did such a great job. In this case, our basketball team. So we're, Joe, he has a son that participated on that team, too? All right. And, but any rate, we're proud of all the winners and wanted to congratulate them. So prior to our starting the council meeting, we're gonna have a quick message from our own council member, Linda Westergaard. Linda, do you want us to stand, or do you want us to...
No, stay seated, please.
So everybody relax, and Linda will...
I thought because it was Earth Day, we would talk a little bit about that. Earth Day has been celebrated every year since 1970 on the 4th Monday in April. In getting ready for today's meeting, I spent a little time looking into the history of Earth Day and thought others might find some of this interesting. Gaylord Nelson was the governor of Wisconsin from 1958 to 1962, where he earned a national reputation as the conservation governor by starting popular programs to clean up waterways, protect natural resources, and create green jobs. His experience as governor convinced him that there was broad bipartisan interest in pollution control, conservation efforts, and recreational development. When he was elected to the U.S. Senate in 1962, he was hopeful that he could influence President Kennedy and Congress to take up the cause of preserving and improving the environment. He worked closely with President Kennedy, who in 1963 began an 11-state tour that was intended to address environmental dangers that threatened the U.S. He was disappointed to find that no one was really very interested. The press focused all their questions on foreign policy, and the public who attended the rallies just didn't seem to care about the environment. Instead of giving up, Senator Nelson came up with a new strategy. Inspired by the campus activism of the late 1960s, he employed a team of experienced students to help him respond to the immediate and overwhelming public excitement for a national day on the environment. However, Nelson insisted the first Earth Day's activities be created not by organizers in Washington, but by individuals and groups in their own communities. As a result of this empowering and vision, 1 in 10 Americans participated in the first Earth Day, drawing extensive attention from the media and jump-starting an era of bold environmental legislation. In the words of Senator Nelson, I quote, "If we could tap into the environmental concerns of the general public and infuse the student anti-war energy into the environmental cause, we could generate a demonstration that would force the issue onto the national political agenda." Nelson's decision to leave Earth Day to the grassroots proved genius. Exceeding their wildest expectations, Nelson and his staff estimated 20 million Americans from 10,000 elementary and high school schools, 2,000 colleges, and over 100 communities took action on April 22, 1970. Though students lent the day a unique spirit, it did not draw out only the young. Labor Union members, housewives, farmers, scientists, and politicians of all stripes, from Barry Goldwater to Edward Kennedy, made up the most mosaic of faces in Earth Day crowds. From that beginning, Earth Day has grown into a worldwide movement with more than 1 billion people taking part in Earth Day events. Thank you.
Before we start, quickly want to tell everybody else one other thing that took place today. You know, there was a discussion around water quality that we ended up in sort of a lawsuit at one moment or another. The city of Des Moines and our Des Moines Water Works has to run a facility to take nitrates out of the water. And then, for the last 25 years, the DNR told us to then take the nitrates that we put out of the water back into the water and wanted us to be permitted to do that. And at the end of the day, I think we got sort of admonished by some of the folks around the state for doing that, even though we were required to do that. As of today, we turned on the facility to, instead of putting it straight back in the water, we now have constructed a pipe and a facility to take that wastewater and that waste product and put it through the metro waste, or not metro waste, but the wastewater recovery deal. So we sent it down to the WRA and treat it, because our staff and our city, we felt that that really wasn't a good symbol. This is all about downstream. We don't want to be, to treat anybody downstream from us any differently than we would hope that the people upstream from us would treat us. And let's all work to improve our water. And so thanks to the WRA, the Des Moines Water Works, and this city council for standing up to try to make it better and serve all of Iowans. So I just wanted everybody to know that we turned the switch on about 1:00 today. So wait. All right. Without further ado, let's get started. I will, let's call this meeting to order, and I'll ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. The consent agenda, item 4A, 4F was withdrawn. The inspections are incomplete. 7C was withdrawn by the city engineer for further study. 19 is corrected. It's roll call, 24, roll call, and council communication number 19-187. And item 48 was withdrawn at the request of Mr. Hayworth. But with those changes, if someone...
I'll move it.
Yes?
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It's been moved? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The same. All right. Item passes. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda items. These are items 3 through 41 this evening. And let me see, Joe. You said 4I and...
H and I. Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't include I at the beginning, but I did include H. But I need to, I have a conflict of I.
So, just so everyone knows, item 4J, council member Gray wishes to speak. By the way, our consent agenda items are items that are generally taken as one vote and wouldn't be discussed unless either a member of the council or a member of the audience asks to have one or more to be polled to answer questions or get some specific additional information on. Again, item 4J, council member Gray wishes to speak. Item 4H and I, council member Gatto will probably abstain and has a conflict. Item 4L, NNP, council member Coleman votes no. Item 5, Gatto wishes to speak. Item 6, I vote no. Item 23, council member Gray votes no. Item 26, council member Mandelbaum wishes to speak. Item 29, council member Gatto wishes to speak. Item 30, council member Mandelbaum wishes to speak. And item 34, council member Gatto wishes to speak. Are there any other items that anyone would like to have polled for further discussion or clarification?
I see no, Mr. Mayor. I'll move it.
All right.
Yes.
7, yes?
All right. Item 4 is licenses and permits. Item 4J is the Des Moines Sports Bar and Grill at 2718 Douglas Avenue. They are applying here to renew a C liquor license. Council member Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have talked with city legal. I'd like to continue this one until the state of Iowa completes their investigation, so we know what direction to go. So I'd like to continue 4J.
Yes.
7, yes?
All right. Item 5, council member Gatto wishes to speak. This is a consideration of Class C liquor license for the Lime Lounge at 435 East Grand Avenue. The recommendation is to deny. Council member Gatto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The applicants have asked for a continuation because they are out of the country, and it will be a two-week continuation. We will grant that. Well, I don't know. I'll move it with a continuation of two weeks. I guess I don't know if we'll grant it until after the vote.
County?
Uh, no.
5, yes. 2, no.
Okie doke. That takes us to item 6. Actually, item 26. Item 26 is approving preliminary terms of an urban renewal development agreement for J-Cor LLC, Joe Codaro, principal for the historic renovation of the Argon Apartments Building at 1723 Grand Avenue for a mixed-use residential and commercial development. Council communication number 19-173. Council member Mandelbaum.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things that I find particularly encouraging in this project. You know, the Argon had been a building that we've had a lot of trouble with and have really struggled to figure out how to redevelop it. There have actually been, in my short time on council, several different proposals for this building, as well as multiple instances of nuisance and squatting and illicit behavior there. And so it's really great to see this project being put back into good use. And there are a couple of things that, in the development terms, that I think are noteworthy. One is there's a carve-out for low-income housing. And even though there's a carve-out for low-income housing, I think a large part of the remainder will still be affordable as well. make this building more efficient as it's being renovated. And that's, in my mind, another positive, and appreciate the developers' willingness to work on that. And so, I'm excited to see this project go forward. I think it's going to be a real benefit to the area and to our community, and with that, I'll move item 26.
Yes.
Yep, that's a project that's long time coming. Thanks.
Seven, yes?
Item 29, these are revisions to the traffic analysis policy and amendment to the site plan policies regarding required process for traffic studies. Council communication number 19-180. Council member Gatto.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Pretty much every related issue to this policy, I voted no on. And so, I wanted to say thank you to the staff and engineering and traffic for getting it right, I think. This is a good policy. I believe it'll help with development. We're not requiring things that we were requiring and the amount of money that we were requiring before. So, Steve, good work by you and your team, and I thank you for that. I will move item 29.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 30 is a letter in support of the avenues Ingersoll and Grand Restoration Board's application to the Iowa Cultural and Entertainment District Selection Committee. Council member Mandelbaum.
I just wanted to take a second to highlight this. You know, one of the great things about this job is you get to work with a lot of people who really care about our community. And there are a large number of folks who are engaged in the avenues on Ingersoll and Grand and are constantly looking for new opportunities and ways to improve our efforts there. And this is something that's been entirely volunteer-led, to apply for a cultural and entertainment district site designation, which will further enhance what we have going on, on the avenues. And really wanted to thank the folks working on that corridor for bringing this to our attention and putting the work into create further opportunities along that corridor. I'm excited about the possibilities, and with that, I'll move item 30.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
All right. That takes us to item 34. This is a donation construction and maintenance agreement with Central Iowa Trail Association, Inc., regarding advanced loop mountain bike trail in Ewing Park. Council communication number 19-169. Council member Gatto.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anytime the city gets a donation, I don't think it should ever go on the consent agenda, so that's why I pulled it off. This is a $15,000 donation by the Central Iowa Trails Association for construction of a mountain bike loop in Ewing Park. So I just wanted to call, give them a shout-out. Ben, a shout-out to you and your team for working with them, with the Parks Department, and just appreciate all the hard work that goes into doing things like that. But we appreciate the donation, so I will move item 34.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
All right. That completes the consent agenda, and let's note that it's 5:13. This requires us to go to our hearing items. And our first hearing item is item 50. Item 50 is dismissing the hearing on a request from Des Moines University to rezone a portion of their property at 3,200 Grand Avenue. Again, this is dismissing that request. Is there anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, could we have a motion?
I'll move item 50.
Mr. Mayor, with that being said, and I'm in support of dropping the hearing, obviously, I would just have to say that I'm disappointed that we haven't reached out to Des Moines U or they haven't reached out to us and continued some talks with them about the relocation bid. So maybe we can refer that to the city manager, a part of this, and maybe you and a few council members can sit down with them and refer that back to the city manager to set something like that up. It would be nice, it would be nice to be able to have a discussion with them. I understand they have an option, but I don't think anything's been bought. So can we make that part of the motion?
Yeah, and let me just, a couple of things. I know that the city manager has reached out and has offered to sit down and have those conversations. So I think it's perfectly appropriate to continue those conversations and make that part of the motion, but I know that there are efforts that have been made, and if there are folks out there that are saying that the city, and I will also say I've reached out as well, although I have not sat down with them, if there are folks out there that are saying the city has not reached out to have those conversations, I'd appreciate it if folks would correct that record. We're absolutely willing to sit down with the folks at DMU, and I know that that has been communicated in several different ways, and we'll continue to be willing to work collaboratively. And I think that's been our position throughout this process. So we'll follow up with the manager, and I'll add that to the motion.
Thank you.
County?
Yes. I'm sorry, I already said it.
Seven, yes?
Item 51 is on a 2019 arterial and collector route ADA sidewalk ramp program, resolution approving the plan's specifications, form of contract documents, engineers estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Inc., Tony J. Vermeer, president, Council communication number 19-177. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Let's go ahead and open the hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the 2019 arterial and collector route ADA sidewalk ramp program. Seeing none? Any motion?
I'll move it, 51 and 51A.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 52 is on 2019 citywide PCC pavement restoration program, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, and engineers estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Tony J. Vermeer, president, $194,875. Council communication number 19-182. A is approving the contract and the bond and permission to sublet. Let's go ahead and open the hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on the 2019 arterial and collector route ADA sidewalk ramp program. Seeing none? Any motion?
I'll move it, 51 and 51A.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 52 is on 2019 citywide PCC pavement restoration program, resolution approving the plans, specifications, form of contract documents, and engineers estimate in designating the lowest responsible bidder as TK Concrete, Tony J. Vermeer, president, $194,875. Council communication number 19-182. A is approving the contract and bond and permission to sublet. Let's open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Item 52.
I see no, Mr. Mayor. I'll move 52 and 52A.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
We promised action on the streets, and this is part of that accelerated plan.
All right. So at 5:17, we have completed the hearings. Takes us back to item 42. Item 42 is amending chapter 102 of the municipal code regarding administrative penalties and maintenance of border areas. Council communication number 19-179. Anybody here to speak to this item?
Yes, Joanna.
Please.
And happy Earth Day to everybody.
Happy Earth Day.
Happy Earth Day.
Thank you. I'm going to just read my remarks and not pretend to be an orator. This year is the...
Could you preface it with your name and address?
Oh, yes. Mary Farrell, 3701 Cottage Grove Avenue. This year is the 57th year since Rachel Carson published her seminal New York Times bestseller, Silent Spring. That was the impetus for the birth of a movement toward people's awareness of the critical condition of man-made environmental degradation. That awareness led in 1970 to the designation of April 22nd as Earth Day, which one year from today will mark 50 years of advocacy for the clean, sustainable world for all of Earth's inhabitants. We cannot claim to be champions of sustainable practices while continuing to advocate for the ecologically unsound ground cover, turf grass, the maintenance of which has contributed heavily to today's climate crisis and ecological destruction. I have the utmost respect for our firefighters. Thirty years ago, the garage of my attached house was struck by lightning, causing a fire. The firefighters arrived and saved the house, the garage structure, and with their quick, professional action, all that was lost or even damaged was the contents stored in the garage and its door. The last thing I would do would be to jeopardize their ability to perform their duties. Two-to-four-inch-high ground cover will not do that. Nor can we continue to permit the spreading of toxic chemicals to maintain grass and other plants in the city's parking strip, endangering rivers, lakes, oceans, and the plant and animal species that live in all of our water bodies. Ultimately, the chemical runoff from this sensitive curbside area also results in the contamination of our drinking water. I realize that prohibiting the use of chemicals on city property will result in cries of outrage by the purveyors of these poisons, but we are way past the time when every single one of us must say enough is enough. Actually, we passed the enough limit long ago, and it is incumbent upon us to stand against the further degradation of our planet and take charge of what is in the power of each of us to control. We have another point of concern, and that is the discrepancy in terminology between the proposed code and the synopsis of that code. The synopsis says that no plantings may obstruct the sidewalk, while the code that will be enforced uses the word encroach. According to Webster, encroach is to move beyond usual limits. Obstruct is to block passage. No one wants the sidewalks obstructed, but six inches of a plant encroaching on the sidewalk does nothing to block or hinder free passage. The alternative to limited encroachment is sidewalks covered in eroded mud every time the rain falls. We recommend that the word obstruct, as used in the synopsis, also be used in the proposed code. If you will pardon a slight crudity, it has been said and said well that the human species is the only species that craps in its own nest. With that in mind, I urge that we return to the drawing board to consider appropriate and responsible low-growing ground covers as alternatives to turf grass to surround fire hydrants, to move to prohibit toxic chemical fertilizers and pesticides in parking strips, and to allow slight encroachment of sidewalk bordering plants. I want to sincerely thank everyone who has labored on this revision. Thanks to their work, we've moved in a positive direction, but there is still some work to be done to have a truly forward-thinking code in line with 21st century realities. We would be happy to meet with anyone who has misgivings, to discuss where we disagree, to answer any questions about our proposed code changes, and hopefully to arrive at solutions that we all can live with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, is there anyone else? All right, I think that, Mary, thank you, and we ought to have a vote, but maybe take Mary's comments and make that part, receive and file her comments and pass those on to staff and continue to...
I'll receive and file her comments.
And give them to staff.
And I'll refer back to staff and city manager's office.
For appropriate comment and update.
Yeah, for the appropriate comment and probably the fire department and things like that, and then I'll move item 42.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 43, amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding parking rates for the city parking garages and allow nighttime rooftop parking at the East Second Parking Garage. Council communication number 19-176. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the deputy city manager and requires six votes. Let's open the hearing and see what anyone has to say about this. Anything? Any comments about parking at the East Second Avenue, or Second Parking Garage?
Mr. Mayor, I don't see any, but I do have a question for staff. We're offering 25 spots, and Matt, you can probably, if we don't sell the 25 to that particular housing, are we going to offer it to someone else?
Sure. This was the first one that came to us, and so we created the program to help them out. They were having some difficulty, particularly in their affordable units.
Yes.
Who were having trouble paying the market rate.
Yep.
So that was our little pilot project. We're also going to, this is a test for capacity on that rooftop as well, to see how the employees that are parking up there, how that, how the flow of parking and traffic works with having residents co-mingled on that roof. And we think it'll go fine at the 25. Even if they take the full 25 and there's, you know, we think there's room for 10 more, you know.
Perfect.
We might reach out to others, see if they're interested.
Well, great plan, and thank you, because I've heard, I've heard those same comments from folks down there. I'm happy to move 43 and 43A.
Yes.
Seven, yes?
Item 44, which is amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding issuance of special parking permits. Council communication number 19-178. A is the final consideration and ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. And B is approving a street use event on-street parking rate policy. Let's go ahead and open this and see if there's anyone here to speak about this. Special parking permits.
Mr. Mayor, just question, comment, speaking with Scott before he had to leave. There is some questions, little bit of concern with the, with the event street parking. And I believe that Scott wants to have a conversation with a few of the main festival folks to make sure they're comfortable. So if you would be okay with just me moving the first reading and not, and not item A, I would be willing to do that, if that's okay with everybody. I know that, I just want to give Scott a little bit of time to, there needs to be some explanation of exactly how much we're saving and we want these downtown events down there.
Joe, you said, but item B only takes one reading, so I want to be careful there, right?
Is that, is that true?
Yeah, it would only take one reading.
Okay, so we'll just do just 44 as the first reading. Thank you, because, yeah, I just screwed that up.
I'm 100% agreement, and I was happy that we had a conversation about how to price these. I'd venture to say, your families are like mine. If you have families that live in the suburbs or outside of the city of Des Moines in central Iowa, they're more than likely coming to Des Moines for some not-for-profit, visiting people at the hospital, going to church, going to a festival downtown, going to the civic center or Principal Park. And I think these festivals draw as many people as any. So I think, I think we have to consider that when we set the rate. And I saw some communication back and forth, probably the whole council did. It referred to cutting it down to 25%, cost the city X number of dollars. But the truth is, we've never done this before, so whatever we charge is going to be 100% more than we had before. And, and so I just want to make sure that we're talking about the whole equation. I'm not sure I know the exact answer, but I'd rather have some more conversations about it.
So that's exactly where I was, but then I've come to find out... So that's exactly where I was, but then I've come to find out that we have cut some of, like, the Blue Ribbon.
Grand Blue Mile.
Grand Blue Mile. Their rate actually was cut also from what they paid last year. So I just want to make sure that we are getting this right and we do the right thing. So I think that's where that, on the blue letter, where we've lost some revenue is where that was coming from. So I think we just need to have just a little bit more discussion about that.
And it's not a comparison of revenue from last calendar year to this calendar year, it's the lost revenue going forward.
Right, okay. I'll move just item 44.
44A. I'm sorry, just 44.
Just 44.
Yes, sir. And both those can come back when we're...
Right.
There's a consensus or better education.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Good job, Joe. Item 45, amending chapter 114 of the municipal code regarding pedestrian safety and use of medians. A is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the city manager and requires six votes. Let's go ahead and see if there's anyone to speak on this item. Again, these are medians regarding pedestrian safety. Seeing none?
I'll move item 45 and 45A.
Thank you, Joe. We desperately needed that. I just need to ask one question. Once this is voted on, when does it go into effect? Which would be?
Seventeen days.
Seventeen days? I know everybody wants to start tomorrow, but I just want to set expectations.
Good job, Bill.
As we see data where this is working and keeping people safer, is there going to be the opportunity to expand the list? I mean, I looked at it and I thought, this is an intersection that concerns me. I shared some with you. How will we approach that going forward to make sure that we have listed the intersections that are, that appear to us or others that complain about having the biggest safety issues?
Since the manager's absent, I'll answer that if you'd like.
Thank you.
It would be empirically based, obviously have to be based on engineering standards, national standards as well. So we'll have to take into account where anyone mentions a particular accident or a particular problem at a particular intersection and see if there is a regulation that would present itself that would promote and enhance the public safety and pedestrian safety. So don't know whether or not that will happen, but that would have to be empirically, as you mentioned, councilman empirically driven data, and that would be analyzed by your professional staff of engineers.
Excellent. Good. Connie?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Take item 46, amending chapter 26 of the municipal code regarding energy and water use benchmarking for certain properties in the city, council communication number 19-185. Let's go ahead and open it up and see if there's any people to speak on this item. I see one right back here. So can we kind of see a show of hands who all wants to speak? So we got one?
No.
Now, want to make sure, we love all the information, we're going to put it into the record, but hopefully everybody's got kind of a lot of different new ideas. If, we don't want to be repeating, but, because this is important work, but nevertheless, we want to make sure that we're not repeating each other and we get lots of new information. And I'll ask our first speaker to step up with name and address, please. So it looks like we have one, two, three, four, five, and then how many more out here? Six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11? About 11?
Thirteen.
Couple over here, 12? Another one? 13? All right, council, how many minutes each? What do you think?
Two or three.
Three.
Let's say up to three each, okay?
Can we have everybody stand or wave if they're already standing that are here for the environment and for this energy efficiency ordinance? Please stand.
That could be part of your speech.
Okay, all right. Everybody stand, that's for this ordinance, for a strong ordinance for energy efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Carolyn Yuland Haak Walker. I live at 4111 Ingersoll Avenue. Yesterday, I took a walk, and when I got home, I wrote these thoughts down. It's called "My Thoughts on a Spring Day." As I walk, I see green grass, a deep blue sky, bright yellow daffodils, amazing leaves are popping out, songbirds are singing, and insects are buzzing. Climate change? Really? Really? It's so deceptive, so insidious. Is there really a climate crisis here? Are there really more hot days acoming, more rainfall happening, more floods, more droughts? Well, our state of Iowa climatologist tells us yes and now. So what do we do? How do we start? The first stop is to stop using fossil fuels. The best way, the cheapest way, is to use less energy. What? I mean, energy efficiency, of course. You, the city council, can do this for the people of Des Moines through a strong, energy-efficient ordinance right here, right now.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Hello, my name is Jordan Oster, and I live at 2236th Street, and I am with the Iowa Environmental Council. I am the Energy Outreach Coordinator. The Iowa Environmental Council is a policy and advocacy-based nonprofit here in Des Moines. And first, I would like to present to the council and mayor a letter signed by a dozen businesses and organizations in support of the city pursuing this building performance policy. Please allow me to read the names of these local supporters. That includes energy service businesses, organized labor, and sustainability-focused groups. The Energy Group, National Retroframing Group LLC, Greenlight Renewable Services, Heat and Frost Insulators Local 74, Des Moines Citizen Task Force on Sustainability, Citizens Climate Lobby, Des Moines Chapter, Iowa Environmental Council, Iowa Interfaith Power and Light, Environmental Law and Policy Center, Interfaith Green Coalition, 1,000 Friends of Iowa, and the Women's International League for Peace and Freedom. I'll pass those around.
All right.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file, Mayor.
All right, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, speaking only on behalf of the Iowa Environmental Council, I'd like to add a few comments about the ordinance. For over a year, the Iowa Environmental Council has participated in the policy development process and has been building community support and awareness for this ordinance. We know this policy will save millions of kilowatt-hours of energy and billions of gallons of water by the end of the decade. We're excited that the city is pursuing, is preparing to take this step, and this is a step that will move Des Moines' building stock into the 21st century. Such a policy is being pursued by a growing number of cities across the United States, and something like this could also make Des Moines a beacon to other Iowa cities looking to be more sustainable. When we increase efficiency, we lower energy use. That means utilities don't have to invest in more expensive power plants to meet demand. Energy efficiency is the cheapest source of energy because it's energy that you don't need to produce in the first place. Benchmarking is a tool that will help building managers better understand how a property uses resources compared to similar types of buildings. The average building may waste up to 30% of the energy it consumes due to inefficiencies. Often, individual companies aren't aware that their buildings are inefficient or that potential savings could be. We hear, you may hear this phrase a few times tonight, but you can't manage what you don't measure. The knowledge created by benchmarking helps building managers prioritize energy actions. IEC, we welcome the requirement that benchmarking be mandatory, but also view it as a first step. Buildings with the lowest energy efficiency scores have the largest opportunity to reap significant returns on energy improvement investments. That's why the Iowa Environmental Council hopes you'll keep performance verification on your radar, whether that's now or in the future when people are more comfortable. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council, and happy Earth Day. My name is Sheila Kanoplo Odole. I'm a local attorney, and I have been part of the process of crafting this ordinance for the last year. I've been volunteering on the Energy Policy Advisory Committee, and we looked at a lot of different plans, we looked at what a lot of different cities are doing, and I would like to thank you all, because what we are considering today is really the first step of a climate action plan. And you all know, we have a small window of time to act on this, so I commend you for considering this. I would like to encourage you to make it as strong as you possibly can, to make it mandatory, because volunteerism doesn't work, or we wouldn't have such bad water in Iowa and in Des Moines, and also because making it required of the affected buildings creates a level playing field for those business owners. And as Jordan pointed out, 30% of the energy and water that they use is being wasted. That's contributing to the problem. So I want to encourage you to help find ways to help these business owners who want to do this, find ways to maybe cost-share or something, these energy improvements, because it's important for all of us. And so as, you know, we're getting towards the ends of the day, the end of Earth Day, be proud of yourselves. Be proud of yourselves on this step that we are taking together, and let's try to make it as effective as we can. Thank you very much.
Mayor, council members, my name is JB Conlin, 3721 Southwest 61st Street in Des Moines. I am a huge green advocate, so I have some trepidation standing in opposition to this, but I'm going to explain to you exactly why I stand in opposition to this policy. These are slides from the city's own slide deck that you can all see in terms of what section, what segment of the industry is impacted by this. You can see it's 56% of the buildings create greenhouse gases. When we look at the share of buildings that are being targeted here, there's 819 buildings, that's only 1.2% of the owners in Des Moines, and I'll point out that those owners are already paying a heavy tax burden on the city. The city is reliant on these building owners for these taxes, and this is going to make it harder for these building owners to pay taxes here. So we're only talking about 1.2% of building owners, and I hear, in some of these meetings, I hear that as a benefit that council members are talking about, when really it is a negative. You are not fairly applying this program to all. It's only 1.2% of the owners. If we're looking at what this looks like, the, it's 36% of the total square footage in Des Moines, so that 1.2 equals that 36%. And I know we're throwing a lot of numbers at you. So here's the city's stated goal, and it's a good goal, reduce greenhouse gases. I think we all agree with that. We all agree, I do anyway, that climate change is a huge problem, and having that as a goal is a fantastic goal. The problem is, this goal will not work. The irony that we have here is this is the benchmarking process, and there's one benchmark in all of the city's notes for this. One benchmark, and that's that 28%. And I'm going to explain to you why it won't work. So as, according to the folks at the city that I've talked to, the average of people that are involved in the program, they get a benefit of 3% out of, 3% decrease in greenhouse gases out of this program. So that's not my tenants, they're not involved in the program, so they're not going to decrease their energy use. The commercial tenants are going to decrease their energy use because they're paying their own bill, so why would they? So you're only getting a sliver of those large owners, so that cuts that 3% on average down to 1%. So even if it was 3%, that is a 900% beating the benchmark that the city would hope to apply, and I don't understand how that's even possible, because if we're taking of the entire segment that is greenhouse gas emitting, when we're talking about industry, transportation, and buildings, we're taking 56% of that, we're chopping that down even further, and we're taking 36% of that. So when we take those together, what it does is it drops it to 20%. So you're going to put on 20% of the buildings, you're going to ask them to reduce their greenhouse gases by 28%? It's impossible. It's impossible. You'd have to, these building owners would have to reduce their energy output or their greenhouse gases by 138%. And I don't know how that's even possible unless we buy some large carbon sequestration machines, and I assume those are pretty fast, are pretty expensive. So this whole thing has been listed as a no cost to the city, no cost to building owners. I've spent personally 10 hours trying to get our data, and I've sat with your energy expert to input this data into the system. So for 10 hours, we've got nothing. It's not ready. Nobody has looked at this for multiple tenant buildings. It has not been tested. And so Mid-American gave us data, and that data, me, and I don't think I'm a dullard, and your energy expert could not figure out how to get this in. There's not slots to put all those inputs in to the program that you guys are talking about. So it's, it just doesn't work. The cost to me alone would be 160 hours of work. That's a whole month that I'd have to take one of my 65 employees out and put them on this program. So if I am going to do that, I've got to see value out of that, and we see no value. The other irony is that we benchmark all the time. Every commercial building has a benchmark, and that's a financial benchmark which tracks energy usage. Every single one has a P and L, and so we're doing this every month. We are benchmarking already, so having us spend an additional eight hours per building is frankly just a waste of time, and it's going to waste $372,000 of your taxpayers' money. And again, this is unevenly applied. Mayor, I heard a bell, do I, am I done?
Yeah, you're about three minutes over. So JB, I understand, you know, and you've got some basis for your position.
Sure.
And so what I would like to do is kind of refer some of your thoughts on to not only the city manager, but to our team that's working on this, and kind of sit down with you to see how we can get it done, because doing nothing, doing nothing to me is not a no-go.
And that's, you know, Councilman Josh asked, he said, "You do your buildings," and I said, "Fine." And I've been working on it since we talked at that meeting, and I've got bupkis, I've got nothing. And so that's what is, I think that you guys are being told as a council, some rosy pictures that this is going to take 15 minutes and it's easy to do. It ain't. It is not easy to do, and so this is taking a lot of our time to do, and, you know, it's the cost to us, Mid-American and Des Moines Water Works, those entities are public utilities, and they've got costs of applying, complying with this program. So those will be passed on to all the consumers. So there is a greater cost here than I think we can calculate. I don't know what the cost to the city is, but I assume, I know from dealing with the Building Department, everybody is super busy. Everybody's resources are taxed. So adding another requirement on to these, on to your staff, I don't think you can do it, based on what I see on a daily basis with...
Well, let's see how we can work with you to try to fix the process, to help you get the numbers that we need and that you need, to see what we can do, not only today, but moving forward, but more importantly, as been pointed out by a number of people, we've got sort of a short timeframe to try to work on some of this stuff and be an example and lead by example. example to show that there progress can be made.
And if.
And in every house, every whatever, I mean, I'm looking at, at, at my.
Wouldn't it have to be everything? So, so we're looking at 28%.
Right.
So we want to reduce 28%? We've got, everybody's got to reduce 28%, which is a huge goal as it is.
No, I understand. But, but we've got to start someplace.
I get it.
We've got to start someplace. We've got 65,000 single-family homes in Des Moines. We're going to try to figure out how to work with them as well.
And make it mandatory for them?
And so.
Because it's mandatory for us.
So, so let's just try to, and you've got a little time to even think about doing it and how you're going to do it. And we need your input to figure out how it becomes more easy. But doing nothing is really.
I agree, Mayor. I went, I came to the first meeting. I expressed my opinions at the first meeting, and I wasn't invited to the second.
Was this to the, the task force that we did in 2004, or the most recent?
So, so I will, I want to, I want to throw some takeaways. Go ahead.
One correction. I mean, all of our meetings have been public and open to whoever wanted.
Not saying they weren't. Not saying they weren't. So, so, you know, from my standpoint as a building owner, we've been doing this for 50 years. We are steeped in, in multifamily housing. Each one of these partnerships that we're involved in is a very complex animal. And I can't just go in and make changes and get a loan and do energy efficiency things. I've got loan covenants, I've got all these complex relationships in there, and it's just not a simple thing to do. So we look at this all the time. We come in when we can, when we have the capital, and replace it with low-flow toilets. We upgrade our lighting systems when we have that ability to do that. But having someone, the city, come into our business and tell us how to run it better, it makes us just feel like the city thinks we're stupid. We don't know how to run our own business, and we've been doing this a long time. So I would ask you guys to really consider that. It's, this is a whole new leg of regulation for the city. So the cities.
Thank you.
Are we at time?
JB, thank you.
Okay. I've got more to say. Had a good joke for you, too.
All right. Step forward.
Thank you, Council. Matt Russell, I'm the Executive Director for Iowa Interfaith Power and Light. We work statewide. Our office is at 505 Fifth Avenue in Des Moines. I actually live in Marion County. But I was at several of the Energize Des Moines meetings, and I've been working with the faith community in, in and around Des Moines. And I applaud you for pushing this forward, to think about how are we going to be proactive? And, and to the previous speaker's point, there's costs to everything, and there are no free rides. And I think the important thing is, is that this is, this is a very doable investment. And my point is that the people of Des Moines, particularly the faith community, are increasingly ready to make those small investments. Because investments are not costs, they're an investment because you know something better is coming out of it. You make an investment because you expect something more. And that's exactly, I think, what the council is putting forth, an investment. So it's also very strategic and smart that you're not saying everybody in Des Moines has to do this all at once, but that you're, you're categorizing this. So under the current proposal of the more than 200 churches in Des Moines, there'd be a couple dozen that would fall into this. So I think, again, that's a very fair way of, of going after this. Six of those, or about half a dozen of those, are Catholic. And, and our bishop here in, in Des Moines is one of the leaders in the country on climate action and introduced Catholic energies, rolling that out. It's a national program, but the Diocese of Des Moines is rolling that out to try to make their, their facilities throughout the whole diocese more efficient. So, again, good targeting and good partners. We had over 200 people at Plymouth Church in, in February at a climate revival. And, and of those 100 people, about 100 were from Des Moines, representing about 15 different congregations around Des Moines. So I would just say, congratulations. Thank you for, for, for challenging people. And I, I want to say that I think the people of Des Moines, particularly the faith community, is much farther along and ready for this kind of investment than conventional wisdom would say. So I just encourage you to keep moving forward and know that Iowa Interfaith Power and Light will partner with congregations to help you roll this out. Last story, Plymouth Church did benchmarking and then energy efficiency investment over about the last eight years. And they saved as much money implementing the low-hanging fruit that they could see from doing the benchmarking, that they save, they're saving over $40,000 a year. They essentially have another staff person that they're able to hire around their mission because they understood what they could do with efficiency. So this is, this is a great first step. It's not the end, it's the beginning, and thank you for putting that forward.
Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor, County, Council members, my name is Scott Cooley. I'm with Arnor Realty Group, and I'm also President of Bulma, Iowa Building Owners and Managers Association. I'm here today to speak in opposition of the proposed ordinance as it is written. I would guess everyone here in the room thinks that conserving energy, reducing greenhouse gases, conserving water is a great thing to do. That's not the issue at hand. The issue is who the ordinance is directed to and the fact that it's a mandated fee or penalty-based ordinance. The ordinance states that one of its purposes is to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 2025. It further states that it's estimated to directly reduce greenhouse gas emissions from properties within the city by 16%. I've asked for reports that shows how much greenhouse gases are being emitted in Des Moines and have not seen those as of yet. The latest DNR report of greenhouse gases indicate that the highest producer of greenhouse gases is the agricultural sector. To think that Des Moines is not impacted by the agricultural emissions would be naive. We don't have a bubble over the city of Des Moines. Commercial office buildings are part of a sector called RIC within that report: residential, industrial, and commercial. The sector is the second largest, but within that sector, residential has a higher percentage of greenhouse gases, followed then, of course, by commercial and then industrial. The latest report, the commercial sector, sector actually went down in its percentage. This ordinance is pointed at the wrong sector. I would offer up that building owners that you're targeting with this ordinance have already been implementing energy and water-saving items for the past many years. This is why you see a decrease in the commercial sector on that DNR report. On December 4th, 2018, Mid-American Energy got approval for their WIN-12 project. This project is a statewide initiative that will provide customers with 100% renewable energy on an annual basis by the year 2021. This does not mean that the coal-fired plants will not be in use. They, they will keep those, and they're, they're a backup, they're a supplement. But if the goal per the ordinance is to significantly, those words are used in the ordinance, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 2025, it sounds like Mid-American Energy has already got that covered by the year 2021. The second issue is the fact that the city wants this to be a mandatory requirement and has language within the ordinance for fines and penalties if a building owner chooses not to participate. We've been told in many meetings that there has to be fines. This is the only way to get information that the city desires. It's unfortunate that the city feels that a heavy-handed, give-them-the-stick approach is the one that will build lasting relationships with the commercial real estate industry, the industry that houses jobs within the city. I can tell you that this approach will have an opposite effect. The increased operating costs for, costs for this ordinance that are in the for lease triple-net market will go directly to those businesses that are housed within the buildings. Again, at the partnership meeting that I, that we had, I spoke with Council Manabom and, to reach out to the city of Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh is one of the 20 cities, along with Des Moines, that implemented a similar ordinance based on the National Energy Program. I do not know if the councilman has reached out, but I did. I spoke with a very nice.
Scott, I've got one quick question, and you're, you're running over time. But did you know you're quoting stuff out of the, of an old version of this ordinance? Have you looked at the current version of it?
I've got it here.
Okay, then probably you should quote from it rather than the old one.
Okay. What was misquoted?
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, so what was misquoted was the, the, Laura, can you, can you, you know it a lot better than I do. So there, there was, it was the, the reporting requirements on it were, go, go ahead.
Thanks, Scott. Laura Graham, Performance and Innovation Manager for City of Des Moines. The, the previous version did talk about the 16% that would be inclusive with the beyond benchmarking components that was stricken from the current draft that's up for proposal. So the, as it sets today, we don't have any ties back to that yet because the benchmarking piece is the first step in thinking about what could some of those complementary programs look like, more of the carrot approach we've been talking about, to take a look at ways to further advance efficiencies based on data and evidence.
So the first thing we're looking at doing, as opposed to throwing the sticks at it, at least in this discussion today, is to at least get the benchmarking done so we can kind of see how these buildings perform, either comparatively to one another in the region or nationally, what's going on?
That is correct. That is not to say, though, that there would not be fees for non-compliance. We're waiving the fees for participation for timely submittal of their data sets, and then if they do not.
Which is due by when?
It would be May of 2020 to the city, so a year from now. But then if, if there's no follow-through on that information, it would be $300 for that first offense, and then 500 for a second and subsequent. So that piece is still in there, but it is, it is different from the version that I think we, it is certainly different from the version we talked about back at the partnership in.
But if I still understand, it's, it's not voluntary?
Correct.
Okay. So that's what we're asking for, is a voluntary program. So, so I, I would, again, I would go back to the city of Pittsburgh, had a very nice conversation with a lady in the Resiliency Department. They have an energy ordinance that is getting good participation without any mandate, fines, or penalties. They use a robust education campaign and a marketing campaign to garner participation. If a city like Pittsburgh can do it, Des Moines can as well. I would challenge Des Moines to do better and come with, come up with an incentive-based program so that building owners that want city oversight into their buildings and how to operate them can use the city as a resource and be rewarded for doing so. Yes, it takes more effort on the cities than a mandated fine-based ordinance. Des Moines can do better than this cookie-cutter approach. Again, reducing energy and water consumption, reducing greenhouse gases is a great thing. What is not a great thing is an ordinance that mandates, it is not, it mandates participation and fines and penalties. I would ask the council to vote no on this current version. Don't get caught up and settle for the cookie-cutter approach based on a now unfunded national initiative. Be creative and work with commercial real estate industry on an ordinance that makes sense for the city and the building owners within it.
Thank you.
Mayor, County, City Council, my name is Zach Falagaski. I live at 4200 Park Avenue. I actually moved to Des Moines three years ago to work in the energy efficiency industry. My master's is in renewable and clean energy, and I've been working in three years in commercial energy assessments, over which time I've done about 50 buildings benchmarked in Energy Star. And to the business owner who is speaking two ago, you know, I'm willing to meet with you, to assist you with those processes. In the time that I've been doing benchmarking, I've found it to be no more than three hours for the initial training and then 15 minutes each month. So we're looking at about eight hours a year to do that.
Do you do it for multifamily buildings?
No, do not. Only commercial.
I think that's the difference from the guy that came up and talked.
Okay, and that, yes, yes. So it's aggregation of data, which I think there was an exception in the ordinance speaking to that, and the aggregation of data.
I didn't interrupt you.
No, you're fine, you're fine. It's a good, good add. And then also additionally, I would say that the, there's no onus to invest in energy efficiency. The benchmarking is only to get an understanding of it. And a similar program in New York State, or New York City, had found a reduction in building energy use index over 13% over four years. And then also, beyond just the non-energy benefits, the lost productivity that has been referenced, I think will be made up in improved employee morale and productivity. It's been shown numerous times that energy efficiency does have positive impact on, on productivity, and so those can be made up from that perspective. Additionally, part of the reason why I moved to Des Moines about three years ago was not only for the cycling community, but the general vibe of the city, which is as good for young people to move here. And the beginning of this meeting, I find it very exciting to be living here in Des Moines. But I think that it's important that we continue to have good policies such that young people would want to live in Des Moines. And although there may be some opposition from the cost to business owners, I think that the benefits to the city economically will outweigh those minor costs in the long term. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Zach.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Dan Warful, 2336 Farwell Road in Councilperson Westergaard's district. I read an interview, and I think it was the Business Insider, I don't know, two months ago or so, that they had approached some council members, and Councilperson Westergaard had asked, was asked about this particular ordinance, and said, "I don't know that my, you know, folks in my ward are going to be interested in, you know, what the building down the street is doing with their energy." And so.
Is that quoted somewhere?
Yeah, it's quoted, it's quoted in the Business Insider.
I'd like that information.
Sure, sure, I can get it to you. Anyway, my point was not to, to throw you under the bus here, Councilperson, I just wanted to, as somebody from your district, say, you know, "I moved into your district two years ago, and I've put insulation in my attic, I've put insulation in my garage. My wife has this funny little remote that turns off my entire strip, power strip behind my television." And just as an anecdotal perspective, you know, I work with some of the poorest islands, you know, in, in Des Moines that are trying to improve the efficiency of their homes. And so a lot of that rests on residents, right? You know, I'm looking at our new greenhouse gas inventory from 2017 that we've worked with you and I to get. 35% of that is commercial buildings, commercial energy. And now residential shares a portion of that, 27%, and transportation. The city's addressing that in all sorts of different formats. And I love the new layout and the new website. There's a whole sustainability section where you can look and see what the city's doing with transportation. And residents are already bearing a lot of the burden for, and responsibility to improve their situation, right? We're working every day to improve our own energy efficiency because it's our bill, it's our bottom line. And so what I don't understand, I guess, is why bigger buildings, buildings that can have a targeted effect in this particular ordinance, if they're already working to improve their energy efficiency, if they're already working to lower their bills, why they wouldn't fall in line with this? And so that's, that's where I'm trying to come from. As a resident of Des Moines, as somebody who works on energy efficiency, I think that this effort from the business community would mean, mean a lot to the city of Des Moines.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Council members, John Bergman, Hubble Realty Company, 6900 West Town Parkway in West Des Moines, Iowa. And I'm here to speak in opposition to this ordinance, not because I don't appreciate and support energy conservation. I do. Water management's important. I've been in the real estate business for 38 years. I'm an early adopter of a lot of energy efficiency, equipment, materials, processes. I'm really opposed right now because of the process that we're in and what's gotten us here today. I'm really the only commercial real estate representative that was on the task force. And I feel that the, the weight was against commercial real estate owners and in favor of people who provide energy management services rather than to the property owners. I'm not really in favor of using the EPA Energy Star platform, the portfolio manager. There's a lot of other benchmarking out there that's easier to use. You've heard JB talk about the difficulty he's had. Part of that difficulty is because of getting all that information for multiple tenant buildings, whether they be multifamily or whether they be commercial, into that platform. They don't have a process right now at Mid-American Energy that really allows you to aggregate that information. They don't have a process right now at Des Moines Water Works that allows you to easily aggregate that information. We've talked about how quick it is, how slow it is. The reality is to enter all those buildings and it's going to take a significant amount of time by property owners. We need to find some way to work with those key stakeholders, Mid-American Energy, the Des Moines Water Works, to create a system where they can assist us with that. There's a way to get that information, whether it's in Portfolio Manager, whether it's in some other benchmarking system, but to get it in there in an easy way that saves some time for these property owners. You know, the reality is, it's not the property owners who use the energy, it's the users in those buildings. If you have a multifamily property, it's those individual tenants who are using water, using gas, or using electricity. Commercial office buildings, it's that tenant that's using it. If you want to focus some attention and some energy into really reducing it, that's the target. It's not the property owner, it's the end user. Thank you.
Terry DeVorek. I am CEO and owner of Red Lion Renewables in Norwalk, Iowa. The reason I wasn't planning on speaking, but after the comments, we are in the process of growth and considering where we're going to hit our national headquarters, and we would like to consider Des Moines. It is these types of programs that we look forward to in a progressive city, and it's these types of things we will look forward to in the future as we look at tenant space to rent. I realize this is the first of a multi-stage process. It's the low-hanging fruit that I expect the city will go towards smaller and smaller facilities, and eventually, everything gets considered. And for the building owners that are out there, we will not consider a building that doesn't meet these. So I am for this action, and I applaud you for doing it.
Steve Coleman, Mid-America Group, West Des Moines, Iowa. We own properties down on Bell Avenue. First of all, I'd like to commend the city and the council members for putting forth this matter. It's an important matter. We all agree on that. Councilman Mandelbaum has been very cordial. We've had quite a bit of correspondence, talking about this matter. And I'm not going to go into any of the details that all the previous property representatives have, but I do want to state that property owners, we in particular, and I know many other property owners do the same thing. We are upgrading our buildings as were permitted by time, by financial matters. A good example would be, we just moved a new tenant into one of our buildings on Bell Avenue. Prior to them moving in, we put on a new roof. We upgraded the insulation. We also upgraded to new LED-type fixture lightings. When we have to replace HVAC units, we do it. So as other property representatives have stated, we're in agreement with the intent of this. We're not in agreement with how it's going to be enforced on us. We want to be as energy efficient as we can. It helps us get us tenants. However, I fear there may be one unintended consequence of this. If tenants are forced to bear this cost based on a timeline set in the ordinance, what is to prevent tenants from moving to suburbs? That's a fear we have. Why should they pay the cost when they can move to a newer building that is already fairly energy efficient, and they don't have to expend any money on a regular basis to stay in the space? And if I hit the three-minute mark, please hit that bell loud. I think that's all I have to say, but we would urge you to consider this respectfully, request that you vote no on this ordinance, or at least defer it until it can be further resolved. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Kent Newman. I live at 409 East Holcomb Avenue in Des Moines, and for the last two years, I've served as the city energy advisor. First of all, I want to respond to Mr. Conlon. Setting up multifamily property is the most difficult and time-consuming in Portfolio Manager. We did that first. By the time we got to the data, we were pretty much out of time. It was last Friday afternoon. I went there at 2:30, left at 4:30. He had someplace to go, and I did as well. We did clarify the data. Mid-American Energy did provide whole-building aggregate data. There was some confusion about which was electricity and which was gas. We did figure that out later. I want to mention a couple other pieces of data. The city council has had a greenhouse gas reduction target of 28% by 2025 for the last five years. Until last year, the city did not have a completed greenhouse gas inventory. With the help of UNI's Center for Energy and Environmental Education, that was completed last year with 2017 data, and it showed that the largest contributor to greenhouse gas emissions in Des Moines is commercial energy at 36%. This ordinance is crafted to address commercial buildings above 25,000 square feet. Industrial buildings are automatically exempted. There's 70 of those. There's 809 remaining buildings. Several of those are city buildings. Some are state buildings. Some are county buildings. Those might, and federal buildings, might be city buildings are already benchmarked and will actually report their data this year. But the whole strategy behind this was, at 25,000-square-foot threshold, you're addressing nearly 20% of the commercial property footage with just, with under 800 buildings. I wanted to mention that part of the greenhouse gas emissions, yes, we're very proud of Mid-American's growth in wind energy, but they still have four coal-fired power plants that affect the air quality in the whole state. We did a voluntary energy challenge. We launched at the end of 2017 called Energize Des Moines. We had quite a few organizations that entered initially, but by the final deadline at the end of January, only four organizations actually benchmarked and had their data entered in Portfolio Manager. That included the city of Des Moines with 13 buildings, La Fredo Fresh Produce with their headquarters, Des Moines Waterworks with their office building, customer service building, and Unity Point Health with their three hospitals. So I just want to point out that voluntary only goes so far. And there's a need for actually requiring property owners. Sometimes you need to bring a horse to water to get it to drink. And I think the data that benchmarking will provide provides lots of opportunities for lowering operating expenses. There was a national study that Principal Real Estate Investors did with the DOE, Principal Real Estate Investors located right here in Des Moines. Over 100 properties, looking at the correlation between properties classified as green, either LEED-certified or Energy Star-certified. There were 60 of those properties. They showed a positive correlation, especially with lower operating expenses, and almost 20% lower operating expenses, but also a higher net operating income per square foot, higher occupancy, lower vacancy rates, basically lots of multiple benefits. Thank you.
You guys are getting tired of hearing all these people talk, aren't you? My name is Carrie Kearney. I am the executive director of 1,000 Friends of Iowa, a Des Moines-based nonprofit, 3850 Marauhey Road. And I'm actually here to speak from a perspective you have not heard yet, and that is of the tenant of one of the, of a building that would fall in this category. So we've heard from some of the building owners who have talked about, well, they didn't have any control over what the tenants do. Well, as a tenant, I actually don't have any control over energy efficiency in the office space that we rent. And as a matter of fact, I have no control over the temperature at all in our office building. We have single- I'm on the top floor. We have single-pane windows that, a couple weeks ago, when it was gusting and the really strong winds, it actually blew paper off the table that was sitting underneath the windows. The lights are old lights, old fluorescent light bulbs. It'd be really great to have the lights upgraded in the space, but I don't have any control over that. In the wintertime, it's freezing cold in there. It's oftentimes that I'm wearing my coat in this building because it has such poor insulation. So the tenants really don't always have a choice in whether or not energy efficiency happens. Yep, I can choose to turn the lights off. There's six individual office spaces inside of my office. None of the lights are on in those office spaces when they're not being used. We only have the copier on if we're going to use it. Everything is turned off. We're an environmental organization. We take, we pay attention to that sort of stuff, but I still don't have any ability to make changes around energy efficiency. Another point, when you're looking at multifamily residential properties, one of the number-one reasons for transient population is high energy cost. When low-income people have to make the choice between paying rent and paying their utility bill, they often can't do it. We've talked to, we've gone and talked to church people and different nonprofits and even city staff numerous times, and we have heard this over and over again, that one of the big issues that prevents affordable housing is the lack of energy efficiency and high energy costs. Landlords have no incentive to implement energy efficiency when they're not the ones paying the utility bill. This ordinance is needed. Yes, I completely agree that if we wanted to have higher results, we need the beyond benchmarking, but let's at least start with doing the benchmarking. This is critical. This is important for tenants in the long run. Doing energy efficiency makes it less, more affordable, less expensive, saves businesses money, and helps tenants like us also save money. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Jake Lundgren with Knapp Properties. Here, I'll be brief. I would echo the sentiments of my counterparts with Hubble and R&amp;R and Conlon Properties, that my, our concern is that in our competitive market, we are already striving to be energy-efficient in our buildings. And as energy-efficient as possible, you know, to be competitive, to gain tenants, and, you know, it goes round and round. My statement would be, as it's written today, with the challenges of inputting this information in the system, I think that needs to be figured out first, and how we can easily collect that data with Mid-American Energy, with Waterworks, and so we can be as efficient as possible, because with, you know, if I had one building with single-meter electric and single-meter water, you know, that's very easy. But when you have dozens, and it's, you know, we have a 200-unit apartment complex and 100-unit apartment complex, and a retail building with 20 tenants, you know, making sure we can get all that data without having to go ask permission to get data from Mid-American Energy. I understand they will give us aggregate data, and hopefully that's the case, and we can get it easily and efficiently. You know, I'm all for it. I'm happy to input this information, but until that process gets vetted out and it's a simpler process, I would say vote no on this.
Anybody else? Anybody else? Seeing nobody, let's get a motion. I would suggest that with a motion, based upon all sides, at least I think that there's a large group of folks here that would like to see benchmarking move forward, but I also hear some people have some concerns around the gathering of data. I would suggest maybe we try to pass a, at least first reading of this, but try to pull together these building owners and try to see if we can't sit down with Mid-American and Des Moines Waterworks and see how we can simplify the data collection, because that probably would help them. Not only that, but if we get a good solution to it, maybe we can pass it on to other building owners as we think forward and share it with those that are under 25,000 square feet, and quite frankly, make sure that everybody that owns a single-family home knows what their situation is and some of the things that they can do to make their energy consumption less over time, which would save them money, and hopefully, to a lot of points here, help save the environment. But that would be my hope. Any comments?
Well, I'd like to start, and I'd like to make the motion, but, you know, I've had the opportunity to be involved in this process from the beginning. And Mayor, you appointed myself and Councilmember Gray to co-chair a task force on, an energy task force. And we opened that task force up to the entire community. We invited a broad range of stakeholders. And John, you're right, the representation at those meetings was was not, not great from the building owner community. And that was a frustration in the process throughout the process. You know, we wanted that participation. We wanted folks at the table. And I'm glad, if nothing else, that this process has now engaged folks and got them talking about energy with us. This is the beginning of the process. This is not the end of the process, even though an ordinance might feel like an end. This is the beginning of a process about how we move forward and how we meet our climate goals. And it's, I think, particularly fitting that we're here on Earth Day, because, you know, climate change, while it is an environmental problem, I think it's broader than just an environmental problem. You know, I think it's a fundamental challenge of our times. And there are plenty of folks who, who have their head in the sand about this. And I look particularly to the federal government right now and see our president vowing to pull us out of the Paris Accord and working as hard as he can to roll back regulations and the approach that he takes to climate. And the good thing is that folks in this room can actually do something about it. Not just the folks up at this table, but the folks who've made their voice heard tonight. We can act, and we can make a difference locally. And a building benchmarking ordinance is one of the foundational pieces of any climate action plan, any effective climate action plan at the city level. And I know there's been some discussion tonight about, well, what is the city trying to accomplish, and starting with our greenhouse gas goal, our 28% emission reduction goal by 2025. And quite honestly, if you look at the latest reports out from the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, I think our goal is probably not aggressive enough from an emission reduction perspective. And I think we should be revisiting that as part of our process of developing a climate action plan moving forward. But you put this, you put that in context, our 28% by 2025, and we've got a greenhouse gas inventory that we've done. And I don't know if we've made it public, but I think it was either in draft form or close, but that, that should be made public, because I think there's been a little bit of confusion, a little bit of confusion about emissions and what role buildings have. But the commercial energy sector in Des Moines is responsible for 35% of the city's emissions. Industrial's another 11%, residential's 27%, transportation being the bulk of the rest. We are not, and Scott, to your point, you know, we don't have the agricultural emissions, and we can't control what happens outside of the city of Des Moines, but we can control what does happen in the city of Des Moines. And that's what this, this policy is designed to take a step towards doing. And this is, really, it's just a step. It's one piece. The benchmarking is the beginning piece, right? The idea that you, you can't manage what you don't measure. And it's targeted at the area where we can have the biggest difference. It's the largest buildings that represent the largest percentage of greenhouse gas emissions. Is that the only action we should take as part of a greenhouse, as part of a climate action plan? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. And in fact, there are other things that I hope this council will be considering in the coming months. You know, one of the things that Scott mentioned was Mid-American Energy and the amount of renewables that they have. And I think it's commendable, the amount of wind that they have added. But as we've seen in the last couple of years, they've added wind energy and their coal generation has actually bumped up slightly. We have six coal-fired power plants that Mid-American is either the owner-operator of or the majority owner of. And that makes our utility here, here in Des Moines, a top 20 coal fleet in the country. A top 20 coal fleet in the country. So we are actually in a place where what we consume, the energy we consume, is having a huge impact. So we need to do better, and we need to challenge our utility to do better. And I hope that's something that the council will look at in the, in the coming months, and I plan on introducing a step along those lines for a more aggressive renewable energy target or clean energy target for the city. But because we need to do more does not mean that we don't work on what our buildings do and how we can address our buildings. do, and how we can address our buildings. And this first step looked at buildings 25,000 square feet and above, and it, all it does is it asks them to benchmark their energy use, compare how they use energy to other like buildings around the country. And if folks are truly doing everything they can, and are truly as efficient as they can, we will find that out as part of this process. That will become very clear as part of this process, because the benchmarking scores will be high. And you know what? If you have a good energy efficiency score, we should be touting that, because that is a competitive advantage. That means your utilities are going to be lower, and you have something that you can offer to any tenant that has a sustainability goal. So if we find that out as part of the process, and you're not currently touting it, it provides you something that you can tout. But if we find something else out, that even though we think we have every incentive to control energy as well as possible, maybe the best of intentions aren't getting translated into reality, and if people learn that too, it opens up eyes and will hopefully prompt action. It will hopefully lead to saying, wait a minute, why, why am I not doing as well as others? And maybe my competitors are doing a little bit better from an energy perspective. What can I do to change that? This ordinance doesn't require you to do a thing to change it yet. It doesn't. It just provides you that information. And it's, you know, one of the things, there have been pieces of this discussion, well, some pieces that, that are just flat-out inaccurate, and there are some pieces that we still need to work through. But the, the question about aggregate data, aggregate data for a large multifamily residential unit, this ordinance addresses that, and if you can't get the aggregate data, there are exceptions for it. It specifically says, the covered property, there is an exception if the covered property is classified for assessment purposes as multi-residential real estate, more than four energy utility meters are associated with the covered property, the electric utility does not provide access to aggregated whole-building data for the covered property, and the owner does not have access to other reasonable means to obtain such aggregated whole-building data. We've tried to address concerns like that, so we can work through, and there's more to do, there's more to help people understand some of the technical pieces, and work with the software, but if we can't work with the utility, and I think Mid-American is willing to work to provide aggregate data, there's an exception in the ordinance for that exact situation. You know, one of the things that, that I, I do want to talk about is, is what's not here. Because we had, we had more to this ordinance in drafts that were circulated, and folks were concerned about that, because we had a performance piece, where we wanted to say, as a city, we don't want to settle for being average. If you're a big building that is below average, that means other like buildings are much more energy efficient. If you're a big building, we'd like you to take some action. And that was part of the ordinance, to look at the largest buildings above 50,000 square feet, so only a fraction of the buildings that are covered under the benchmarking, and then the poorest performing of those, the ones who we know there would be low-hanging fruit out there, because there is so much room for improvement. We wanted those below-average buildings to take action, but not immediately. Over time, there was a five-year window before this even kicked in, and another five years to fully phase in. We provided a lot of flexibility in terms of the type of action. Now, what I'm hoping is that that will turn into a framework for a voluntary program going forward, to look at incentives, to look at how we can work with the business community, on how to move this forward to our shared goal, because every single person who came up and spoke did not object to the goal. Every single person said they want to do this. So let's, let's use the work that we've put in for the last year, in developing a framework that's not, that's not in this ordinance, because folks thought that that was too heavy on it, to move forward and use that as a way to measure some voluntary action, and to guide voluntary action, so we do see some of these reductions. And the other piece that I hope we do, and we have not talked enough about, you know, we had the voluntary energy challenge, which it would have been great to get more participation, but that's a first step. The next piece of that is, we want to recognize buildings that are taking steps to improve their, their energy efficiency. And we've been working with staff, and that's going to be a part of my motion too, to be more explicit about that piece of this. We've been working with staff on the parameters of what we can do to recognize the buildings that are taking action, that are good performers, that are improving their performance, and we should do that as part of this process as well. And that can be done in an entirely voluntary manner. You, you want the voluntary, we will give a framework, and we will recognize improvements that are made on a voluntary basis, beyond just the benchmarking that, that we're looking at doing.
Do you have a motion?
Yes. So with that, I will move, I will move item 46, with direction to the manager to engage stakeholders, to address concerns that were raised here tonight, to also provide a recognition framework, as well as to work on a voluntary incentive program, as part of this process as well.
And this would be the first reading?
And this would be the first reading.
Linda?
My comment is, is that I think we, as a council, should have all been involved in what was taking place. And I am all for energy efficiency. I'm all for reducing greenhouse gases. I personally, at my house, have done everything I can possibly do to, to keep my energy low until you's less consumption. I'm, I'm right there. I'm, I'm an advocate for it. But there's, I really believe that there are better ways. I asked several times, who's on the committee? Who's attending? I never got those responses. I've asked, are we testing this? Just like any program, any of us who have jobs, when you get a new system, you go out and test it, and you make sure that it works. You know, we get, we get to ask some questions based on our ordinance, and I submitted my questions, and I'm told, yes, that, that the city has done benchmarking. Why has that not been shared? If we've tested it, and you know that it works, why, why hasn't there been a workshop where it's brought to us and said, this is the result, this is where we are with the benchmarking?
There, there was a work session where Jim Hoff actually talked about-
But I want to see the numbers that have been entered into the, into the portfolio manager, because I'm not convinced, based on what I've seen, because I have gone out, and I have made phone calls, and I've said, who's, you know, tell me about this ordinance. What are your thoughts about it? And this ordinance has changed several times. It was only a week ago that this last ordinance came out. I'm a little surprised. I think that we deserve better. I think that we, and every citizen here, should have had the opportunity to visit with the city about this benchmarking ordinance. It's bothersome to me that, that we're asking just a small percentage of commercial owners to take part in this. How many of those, of those people did we involve? I know in my questions, I asked, who wasn't asked to the meetings, and I'm given a list of 170 people. I don't think you had 170 people at any of your meetings, and like, like the gentleman said, he was invited to one meeting, he didn't agree with it, and he was never invited back. And to say, oh, well, it's on the website, and you could see it. You know what? I'm on the, I'm on the city website multiple times every day, and I honestly didn't see it, but I think it would have been real easy to say, hey, council, this is where we are. The ordinance that, the reading that we're asked to do today does absolutely nothing to reduce greenhouse gases. The only thing that it does is it says, if you're a business, a building owner, and you have more than 25,000 square feet, you are required to benchmark. Now, we've heard one person say that he spent, I don't know how many hours, he's tried to input it, he sat down with Kent on Friday, and it, it, they weren't able to, to enter the information. So how can we possibly put this ordinance in place until it's been tested, until we know it works, until we have really engaged with the people who own those buildings? That's what I'm asking for. And, and I know, I've heard enough of the conversation, that, you know, we're going to start with this, but it's going to get down to, you know, to more people. That's great, but we should be doing something to work with our residents, not to say, oop, here's this ordinance, and if you don't, if you don't do it, I'm going to fine you $300, and if you still don't do it, then I'm going to fine you $500. We should be working with them. We should have them in our office, and we should be saying, here, let's get our data, let's work with Mid-American, let's work with Waterworks, let's together work, get this data, let's put it in there, and let's see where we are, so we can see some real results. But right now, this ordinance says, it reads today, you're just saying, comply, we're sending $300, and we're not going to do anything with it. You're not going to do anything with it, unless you want to publicly shame, unless you want to print the, the names and, and the building owners, which I think is a problem, because if somebody's going to sell a building, I mean, you're, you're, you're asking for information that really is not public information. Or you could call Mid-American and say, hey, what's their energy use? But there's just so much that we could still do, rather than just pass this blind ordinance that does absolutely nothing. I know everybody out here, I agree with you, we want to reduce gases, but this ordinance doesn't do it. This ordinance does nothing. You're just gathering information, and we're going to have somebody at the city spend their time to look at it, I guess. I guess you're going to look at it. I, I don't know what you're going to do, but you're not going to do anything else. There's nothing in here about, you're even going to go back to the, to the business owner and say, hey, this is, you know, you could do better. There isn't anything like that.
You've got to start somewhere.
All right. So, Linda, I appreciate your input. I think the recommendation here was, obviously, this is the first reading.
Yep.
And I think that is, is, has been pointed out, not only here this evening, but many times, it's really tough to manage if, especially greenhouse gas emissions, energy use, if you don't measure it. And I know it's tough to measure, and that's why we've suggested working with these people that are having difficulty, working with Mid-America and, and Waterworks, before we pass it on. We've got two more readings, and maybe the next one won't occur at the next meeting, but I suggest that the manager, and, and his people, and Mid-American, and the Waterworks, let's all work together to try to make some improvements, so that as these people do manage, they can make improvements, and hopefully brag about it, and save money, and, and not only for their tenants, but in some cases for themselves. Bill, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm going to say three words that I'm sure everybody out there would like to hear. I'll be brief. I have been part of this process for over a year now. I've been on this roller coaster ride, where we've had the highs of everybody being on board, to down to the bottom, where everybody thinks it's absolutely crazy, and then we go right back up. It's just been a roller coaster. I think, if you look at everybody out here, we're all in agreement that we can improve. How do we get there? There's been quite a bit of conversation about, the demands get put on the business community, and there's also the other side of the people that want to save our environment and do the right thing for our environment. So I've listened to the both sides many, many times. We've got, in my view, really two options. We can sack this whole thing and start the process all over again, with no guarantee that we're going to end up back here on the same playing field. Or, we can do, as the mayor suggests, take a first reading on this, and then continue to work, because nothing happens until you get to the third reading. I think we need to get something started. You know, you can't get to here unless you start somewhere. So I'm going to back Josh's motion. I think this is a good start for everybody. We can get a lot more feedback from the business community. I, I embrace their, their complaints, their concerns. I know there's going to be some ground we can make up, there's some ground that we can get together and make something happen. But as people have said, we've got a great city here, we've got a heck of an opportunity to make it even better. Let's get something started, and we can keep on improving in our business community. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah, Joe had his hand up.
No, go ahead. Connie can go.
Connie, go ahead.
Once I'm long-distance. I'll be brief, too. I've supported the motion. I think that we need to be at a starting point, and I just want to go back to when I was on school board, to the last 14 years. If it hadn't been for our benchmarking and our energy efficiency programs that we put in place, we would have had millions of dollars wasted and put into energy instead of into education. So the school district has been a model for what you can do with benchmarking, and making efforts to change the dynamics, and how it becomes an economic incentive to do these things. And the other thing is, just quickly, that Greta Thunberg, or I believe she's a 15-year-old Swedish girl, I think one of her talks, she said, instead of looking for hope, let's look for action, and I think this is one small thing we can do, to start the process.
Joe?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. And, you know, I appreciate your efforts, Mr. Mayor. You've been doing this, and I know this has been a goal of yours for a very, very long time, before I ever sat down here, so applause to you. Appreciate your initiative of setting up this task force with Bill and Josh, and, and trying to get something accomplished. So I thank you for that. Everybody wants the same goal, and we just need to know how we can get there and really make a difference. Does this, does this ordinance or policy going to make a big difference? Time will tell, I guess. What, what we need to do is, is, we need to do some benchmarking. The more Josh talked, the more I was thinking, man, I'm going to vote no, because of all the things you kept saying, so. I was just like, hey, I've been fully prepared to support this. But, so I just have a couple of questions about, first of all, talk to me a little bit about the state buildings. Are we, are, are we, are they part of this, or are they excluded from this, or, well, tell me, tell me a little bit about that. And maybe, is Laura going to answer the questions, or Josh, or Bill, or?
Sure.
Laura can.
Bottom line, I don't think we can control-
We can't control any other buildings in the, in our city?
The state buildings.
Oh.
We'd like them to pay for police and fire, too, but that-
Okay, so that's it, so that, so that answer's no, so all the, the buildings over 25,000 square feet that the state owns will not participate in this? And do we know how many buildings that is?
Well, Mayor, I think you raise a good point. I think I would like to add to my, my motion, that we should send a letter from the council as part of this-
Yes.
-to the state, inviting them-
The more you keep talking, the more I might vote no, Josh, so I would just, I would just sit, I would just sit there for a second.
Joe, I, I don't think anything I say is going to make a difference. But I, I think we should add that to the process, and the governor, in her energy plan, actually talks about benchmarking, so I, I suspect they, they use probably their own benchmarking software, but they're doing it.
So, question number two, but I think Josh might have answered this for me. If, if we're not able to get the data from Mid-Am or Des Moines Waterworks for multifamily buildings, are they excluded, and they don't have to pay the penalty, and they- buildings, are they excluded and they don't have to pay the penalty and they just don't have to participate in it, Laura?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Gatto, could you repeat that, please?
Sure. So, a question to JB's concern, because I know he has many multifamily and it's going to be, you know, I mean, if he tried to do it for one building, I can't imagine how long it's going to take for another building. But, so, if Mid-Am, and I know the mayor said that we need to look at this and that's why we're going to do it. So, if Mid-Am and Des Moines Waterworks don't give the data that we need to put into the portfolio management, are they excluded from it and they're not fined? There's no penalized? They're...
Correct. So, as the ordinance is drafted today, if they've made a good faith attempt to get that data and they were unable to get that, they would be exempted. Now, I would also say that, you know, staff would be more than happy to sit down and work with them again because you're right, there's a lot of levels of complication to those buildings.
So, to that point, Laura, we've been, you guys have been doing this for a year, okay? And we've hired a consultant that came up and spoke. And so, we haven't taken one of the stakeholders with probably the most multifamily and we waited until Friday before the ordinance is going to be in front of them and sat down and haven't helped him enter the data to see exactly how long it's going to be. So, we waited until Friday to do that after we've been discussing this a year, right?
We could have done that better. That is true. And we'll make a good faith attempt to do that moving forward in the next several weeks.
Okay. And then, talk to me about enforcement. So, if, there is no penalty if you don't participate, other than 350 the first year and then 550 the rest of the time. If you don't participate with it, you can just pay the fine and that's part of the enforcement. And that's for each building, correct? If you have multiple buildings over 25,000 square feet?
I'm willing to get a point of clarification on that, but I do believe it would be per property.
Okay. Okay.
And to answer your prior question about state, they do have 15 buildings in Des Moines proper.
The state has 15 buildings?
That is correct.
Okay.
Does that include the buildings in the fairgrounds?
Doubt it.
I would imagine it does, yes.
Can I just ask Laura one question? Have you talked to, have you involved any other of the 817 building owners and asked them to sit down with you and work to input the data?
Councilmember Westergaard, we have done that with a few properties. We did go through the Energize Des Moines voluntary program last year. We had about 12 interested participants. We had four that came forward. We want to continue that program and then moving forward between now and, you know, if the ordinance is enacted, between now and when that information would come due to the city, we do a series of events like we did with the energy benchmarking program. So, just understanding how to implement the data one-on-one, helping them get that data and then helping them get that into their program.
And to that, it's going to be at least a year, correct, to help them gather this data?
That's correct.
So, from when we pass it on a third reading, whenever that might be, a month from now or more, they've got a year to try to comply unless, of course, the situation is so overly complicated and we're not getting the data out of the providers, in this case, Mid-American and Des Moines Waterworks, in a fashion that is either readable, collectible, or comparable, then they don't have to comply.
Correct.
They've got a year to do it. It's not like tomorrow they just have to do it.
I understand what you're trying to ask and I kind of would like the same. So, before we have a second reading, each individual that came up between Nap and Hubble and Conlon and anyone else that has property, will you sit down with them and help them and see how long it takes? Let them pick out the building that they want to do and let's make sure it works. And they can pick out the most complicated property that they have. And if I was them, that's what I would do.
I would hope they do.
And I would sit down with them and it probably should have been done well before we ever had this in front of them, in front of us, to make sure it works and to make sure that you can get the data from Des Moines Waterworks and Mid-Am.
We will absolutely do that, yes.
Good.
Mr. Coleman?
Thank you. I won't be brief. That's what everybody else has been saying.
I didn't say that.
I'm, first off, Happy Earth Day to everybody. And it's, as Josh pointed out, it's great that we're speaking of it. And as Linda, I've tried to do everything I can at my own home except give a couple of kids away and they consume a lot of dang energy. But, save the drama, I'm a yes vote tonight. But I do think that we have a lot of, thank you, I think we have a lot of work to do. I think everybody up here has stated that. I'll just tell you a couple of things. Mr. Russell, who I've met before, you know, called out faith. I will tell you, a large part of why I think it's time to do something along these lines is my pope and my bishop talk about this a lot and they've spent a lot of money on their own buildings. I mean, some of you that are in this industry have done expensive work at some churches and the diocese because they've put their money where their mouth is and I think that's important. By no means do I think we have this nailed exactly. I think we have work to do. The mayor has suggested things, everybody has. But I think the question is for me, not if we do something, but how we do something. And I hope we take some time. I will say that I'm a little disappointed because I've been asking a lot of questions. This might surprise you. I don't think any of us saw the recommendation that's on our agenda until last Thursday. I don't know what day it came by email. It was after work, I think it was Thursday. So, we're all kind of putting our arms around it. There's going to be some knee-jerk reaction because everything that is, you know, in the public world is, you know, a right or left conspiracy or whatever. I do think it's instructive on the, not if we care about this, but how we do it. You had people from the Hubble, Conlon, and Nap family companies here, you know, I'm in a political party where those people have been pretty important to us. And they're saying, let's just make sure we do this in a way where it can be healthy and productive. So, I don't want this to be turned into some kind of bitter political battle because I think there's good people that want to find a place to agree on this. When I brought it up at home and talked about the fact that this has come out with only transparency, the first comment, it was actually my wife who could normally, doesn't care about anything we talk about or, you know, I mean, this is just not her deal. And she said, oh, a little bit like the cereal box where people had to start putting the ingredients down on there, you know, where people can read. And I thought to myself, that's actually a really good analogy on being transparent and open about data. You know, nobody's passed a law that says I can't have my Fruit Loops, but I do know what's in it. And I think if we can find a place to get there that is not overly burdensome on the businesses, that would be good. Here are a couple of things on my list and this is repeating that I'd like to be thinking about. The instrument itself. A couple of the people that spoke said there's a better instrument than the Energy Star or the Portal that we're going to use. I'd like to make sure we're on the right one. People have talked about multi-housing, but it's multi-tenant, I think, right? I want to make sure that it's not, you know, there's a number of multi-tenant buildings that if, so, I want to make sure we get that right. I think nailing the fine versus the incentive is important and I think the appeal process is important. I don't really get it and in reading it a couple of times, I don't know if somebody can be fined every 30 days or if in year one they get 300, year two is 500, or is it every time they miss a 30-day window, they get fined again? Quite honestly, I think if we pass this, which I told you, I'm willing to pass it in some form, we should be able to stand up for what we believe and the appeal process at some point should come here. When we level fines because somebody sells cigarettes to a young person or violates liquor laws, those come to us. We vote to suspend or revoke or fine companies. And if we're fining companies, I think we should be able to see that. And the people that are out there that think they should have an exemption or something should be able to come here and tell the people to pass the rule that they, you know, why it is. And I think it'll help us, help the rules evolve over time to make sure that we've nailed it right.
What you're saying that, let me say one thing. I think that, I absolutely agree with you. We want to make sure we're doing it on the right platform. But I think one of the things that our committee has worked on and I think we want to look into it a little deeper, but I think the data should be comparable. And so, if we're not, you know, using a platform that everybody else is on either the collection or the reporting way, then if it's not comparable, then we ought to look at what we're doing. But if everybody else is, you know, using or we can do a sort of a national comparison, that starts making sense to me. On the other hand, you know, if it turns out that nobody else is using this, then let's, I'd say rethink, but maybe there's an amendment that can be made that makes it more comparable. Because I think the advantage here is showing that here's how our Des Moines buildings and our Des Moines owners are moving forward and making good things happen and look at our buildings compared to the rest of the country. And so, anyway, I'll just throw that in on what you're saying.
The last two things that I'd throw out just for the list of things that we're going to look at is, what does the report look like online? That ties to the mayor's point about comparabilities and others. And what kind of liabilities or issues do we have if we post bad data or, and that's probably something for the attorney just to help us navigate. So, those are all, those are all things that I'm worried about. And I'm worried if we don't hit it really square and get buy-in from a lot of these folks, it will, it'll die of its own weight. I want to make sure that it's sustainable, no pun intended. Or it is intended, maybe. It's both. It's sustainable in many ways.
Right. Great comments by everybody. And obviously, there's lots of differences of opinion, but that's, I guess, what democracy's all about. And I want you to know that as we represent the people of Des Moines, it's not about Democrats and Republicans. This is about best policy and best efforts to make Des Moines a great place to live and a great place to raise a family, grow a business, do things. And every single day, whether it's a pothole or it's a sewer or a streetlight, if somebody's got a problem, we're going to be out there trying to do it. And it doesn't matter, the politics set aside. We're trying to do the right thing to move this city forward and we're recognized for it nationally on so many scales. And it's this kind of debate that helps us to get there in a way that everybody can understand what we're doing and why we're doing it and how we're doing it. And to the people that have concerns about it, let's get together very quickly and see what we can do to try to make this process something that works. I'm not saying it's going to pass. If it doesn't pass, I guess, you know, we're back to the drawing board. But on the other hand, I think that, I appreciate everybody's input and for anybody that feels like that they weren't there for the whole process and need to be there for more of it, the door's still open. This thing's going to be moving forward for years to come and we want to help everybody achieve their highest goal possible. And hopefully, that for those of you on the business side, it improves the bottom line and improves it. So, thank you for your input. But we've got a motion I think that we all understand.
So, well, I'm not sure that we do. Are we voting for the ordinance as written or are we voting for the ordinance with all of these suggestions incorporated into it for the second reading?
We're voting for the ordinance as written and we're going to work on these issues. We need to see language before we would make any amendment and that can be done at the next reading. There are also the pieces looking at the voluntary incentive and that may or may not. I mean, some of that's going to be longer than perhaps just this, but certainly the piece of, the recognition piece, my hope is that we can have that a little more flushed out to share with folks for the next reading. So, the direction is to work on all of these issues and then they'll be part of our discussion at the next reading.
And do we have enough time to have the second reading at our next meeting? Or do we need?
I don't think we do.
No.
So, the second reading will be on down the road.
Right. When they meet with all the individuals and make sure it works.
I think tentatively, let's think about it being four weeks from now. And hopefully, we'll have made significant progress and if not, we'll have to re-discuss that. But let's get some information back from the manager and from all departments and see how we're going to, and I look at Laura and I look at Matt and Scott and all the people that have been working on this. So, let's see what we can do to move this thing forward. But it's not going to be, we're not going to have the next reading next meeting.
I will support it if we go into this knowing that we still have a lot of work to do.
Okay. Connie?
I vote yes.
Seven yes.
All right. Thank you all. Now, those of you that have been waiting for it, we're moving on to communications and reports. And this is a request to consider a installation of a sidewalk, crosswalk traffic signal at the intersection of Southwest 9th Street and Davis Avenue. Anybody here to speak to this item? Step up and we'll give everybody kind of a second to get by you there. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Hi. Your name and address first.
My name is Frank Strong and I live at 1048 Davis Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa.
Thanks, Frank.
And I'm not here to talk about energy saving or emissions. I'm here to talk about the need for a traffic signal on the corner of Southwest 9th and Davis Avenue. I'm also here to talk about a guy by the name of Joseph Fuller who was a 12-year-old who was crossing that street a couple of years ago. And he was killed right there at that intersection. And I'm also here to talk to you about my wife who was driving, I don't drive, ladies and gentlemen. And that's a good thing, okay? My wife has cited she drives and she was trying to turn left off of Southwest 9th on October 28th of 18 last year. And she was plowed into by a driver coming too fast down the hill there. And she's still injured as a result of that. And so, in addition to those dangerous incidents that have happened on that location, I, there's also been some complicating factors. They're doing some work at the park there and there's a road that's closed, so that usage on that street has increased. And there's construction over on Floor Drive where they're down to two lanes, one lane each direction. And so, that's increasing the amount of traffic on that stretch that goes. And I'm talking about, if you're familiar with the lay of the land there, it's just across the River Bridge going south from downtown and it's, there's a McRae Park there, that's where they're doing the construction work. And it's going up the hill and it's coming, it's very busy. And so, I have here tonight some petitions that have been signed and I'd like to present this to the council. That folks in my neighborhood are very concerned about this as well. So, that's who's primarily signed this.
Right. If you would hand it to Mr. Coleman there on your left.
I got it. Thank you.
And...
I'll move to receive and file.
All right. Go on, favor say aye.
Aye.
If you would hand it to Mr. Coleman there on your, your left.
I got it.
All right.
Thank you.
And.
Could we?
I'll move to receive and file.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vows? Thank you.
Aye.
We're good.
The.
Now, the petition is for a, some sort of a traffic crossing signal, right?
Yes, it is. It is to have one installed there, and the, the people from Traffic and Transportation or Engineering were supposed to be here, but they evidently had a different meeting, so they.
He's right behind you.
Mr. Neighbor is.
They're here.
Oh, they are here? Oh, okay, very good. The, a couple of the things I want to mention about that intersection is, when I talked to travel, when I talked to the Traffic Department, and they were very nice to me, by the way, they said they had some kind of a assessment that they used, and, and one of the things that was not brought out, there's like eight criteria in this assessment, and they said that there, there was not a school involved, so that wasn't, didn't meet that criteria. But there is a stadium there that's where the football is played, just about two blocks west of that intersection, and that's where the buses come, and they use that field three, three-quarters of the year, not the day of winter, but they use that field pretty much year-round, so, and these big buses come, and they have a difficult time going up there. It's a steep grade there, coming up, out of that, headed east from, on Davis Avenue to merge and head back to other parts of the community with their buses. I just wanted to raise that issue, and I appreciate your support in taking a look at that and, and helping to make our, our, our community, our, our neighborhoods safer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Frank, thank you very much, and I would suggest somebody gives a motion to not only receive and file his petition, which we already got, but to refer this to the city manager and to our city engineer, and that we can take a look at the possibility of, of that crossing signal. Looks like we've got one more.
Mr. Mayor. Name's Clark Way, 2301 Southwest 9th, I own the property there at the corner, same as Frank was talking about. I got some signatures, we had talked about signatures. I have 750 signed on the petition. Lots of people talking about it. It's an extremely, extremely dangerous.
Do you have a business there?
Yeah, the Angry Goldfish. You and I have talked. We sat on the corner one day.
Exactly right.
And we talked about how dangerous that corner was, and we sat outside for about 45 minutes. I kind of ruined your dinner a little bit, which I apologize for. Took you away from your wife.
Hopefully you bought it for him after that. You ruined it.
That was a gift for Tina. Keep him on.
But we sat there, and you had stated how dangerous that corner was. Now that FLUR is down the way it is, that, Joe, you see that street? It's insane. People drive down that road with no regard to anyone, none. It's a speedway. I can give you some traffic. When they put the cameras out there, the, the mobile traffic unit, in 2017, they put it out there five times, average of 80 tickets a time, 3,870 cars went, and that's one way. So you gotta kind of double those numbers, and that's only going from 8 o'clock in the morning till 5 o'clock at night. The next year, 2018, six times, averaged 74 tickets, 3,140 cars. This year, the first time it was out there, 103 tickets, 4,301 cars, one direction, that's it. The Street Department, they sent me, they were kind enough to send me the, the study they did, and they had 20,000 cars going down that road, with 85 people on a Wednesday, 85 people crossing that street. We didn't meet a threshold, apparently, with 85 people crossing the street with 20,000 cars. People fly down that road. This year, I went back and looked at my cameras, because this was done seven months ago. It took them seven months to count the cars, by the way. They, they did the study seven months ago. Took them that long to get it out. I went back to have cameras on that street. My lowest number, I had 70 people cross that street. My highest number, I had 258 people cross that street in one day. And that's from 11 o'clock until it got dark, and there was still a parking lot full of cars across the street. So there was more people crossing, I just couldn't see. It's ridiculous. It's the most dangerous corner I've ever seen. Like Frank was saying, a gentleman, a young man was killed there, just, it was April 4th at 5:30. Somebody went over the, where the people stand on the corner to cross, went right through that and hit the building across from where I rent the parking lot, went right where people should have been standing. People, there, somebody's going to get killed, somebody's going to die. In this month alone, I have witnessed four accidents on that corner. Witnessed them. I don't know how many are happening when I'm not there. There's three telephone poles in front of my business. Each one of those telephone poles has been hit in the last 12 months and knocked down. Somebody's gonna be standing on that corner, a group, six, eight, 10 people, and they're gonna get mowed down. They are. It's, it's going to happen. It's going to be a horrible, horrible situation when it happens. You know, in the last two and a half years that I've been open, I've paid over $300,000 in taxes. Payroll taxes, yeah. Payroll taxes, sales taxes, and property taxes. I called all my accountants, got all the numbers together. It's over $300,000 I've paid taxes. Put a crosswalk there. At the minimum, put a crosswalk. I believe Frank is correct, it needs to be a stop light. You've got McCray Park now, you spent well over a million dollars to get that going. You can fish in that pond, you can ice skate in that pond. I'd never let my kid cross that street to use that park. Why would anybody? It's, it's a terribly dangerous corner. When we first purchased that building and we were remodeling it, a young girl, six, seven years old, came up to the corner. My wife and I are inside. She walked up to the corner, she stood there, she stood there, she stood there, she stood there. She finally sat down on the sidewalk, because she couldn't get across the street. My wife went out, took her hand, and they ran across the street, because you have to run across Southwest 9th. If you have any kind of a problem, if you can't walk fast or run, you cannot get across Southwest 9th. You just talked about how this is a committee to do things in the neighborhood, things that are easily done, not CO2 emissions that's gonna take a whole big thing. This is something easily fixed for the neighborhood. There's a large group of people that live in that neighborhood. They deserve better than they're getting. The cars, the buses. Buses, I drive that road six times a day. I live downtown, I go back and forth to the restaurant. Cars ride you, they yell at you, they, they, they do obscene gestures to you. I've had, I've been on that street corner and had bottles thrown at me. I planted flowers outside the other day, and while I was planting flowers, I had some debris from the street, I thought I brought it with me, large pieces of plastic that hit me while I was planting flowers, because the buses go right by there, zoom by there. 600 more kids are gonna go to Lincoln High School next year. 600 more kids are gonna be walking around that neighborhood, are gonna be taking buses, their parents are gonna be picking them up. We've got at least two years that FLUR is gonna be closed down like it is. The traffic out there is, it's, you have to go see it to believe it. People just fly down that road, and it is a steady stream. I thank you for your time.
Steve, I don't know that you need to come up right now, but you know my position on this. We need to take a look at this. We see those flashing lights at other corners. I agree with him. I don't want to see another kid killed on that street.
Well.
And I.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick comments. I've grown up, had a business there for 26 years, one block away from that, so I'm real familiar with what Clark's talking about. I usually exit out of there, or go to the bank, or come up by his corner. Cars fly up and down Southwest 9th. They have for 40 years, ever since I've started driving. You know, I, I've, I've listened to the Neighborhood Association tell me, yes, we need a crosswalk, we need a traffic signal there. I've had customers come down at the restaurant that are Clark's customers, and he's doing a great job there, and hats off to you, because every business, except for the business when I first bought it, has failed there, because they didn't do what you're, what you're doing. So, good job out of you, and I appreciate how hard you're working and what you're doing for the neighborhood, because it's, it's good for, for all of us on the South Side. And, you know, you, you're, you're absolutely right. It, it, you know, I'm not sure, there's things that have been told to us before that says it's not warranted, and we've, we've made a decision, the seven of us, that it is warranted. So I believe that, you know, maybe we just take a look at it and, and we, we see what we can come up with, because anything that can slow traffic down around that corner, anything that can slow traffic around on that corner, how thin it is, because we talk about how when the lanes are, you know, thin and not wide, how people are, it's gonna slow down, they don't slow down around that corner. And, and it's, he's absolutely right. I, you know, if I'm turning right on Kirkwood or turning right on Davis, you better look in your rearview mirror, make sure you're not gonna get rear-ended, because they're on your tail. And.
Well, it's.
It's crazy.
It's on an incline, it's on a bend, and I, I think the urgency is underscored when he brings up FLUR.
Yeah. And you, you know, he's, he's absolutely right. When I, I mean, he has, his parking lot's not that big, and, and hats off to you for being successful, and a lot of his customers are parking across the street. You know, the, he's, he's cut a deal with the, with the tenant across the street to allow his customers to park there, and you know what? We need to accommodate someone being successful. And so, good job on you, and let's see what we can do.
Just for those that are watching, Southwest 9th and Union are not one block apart, just, just for the heck of it.
It's nine blocks apart, but I think it's one block apart. I consider it one block apart. Thank you, though, for clarifying that.
Just trying to help you out.
It's nine blocks apart, isn't it?
All right. So can we somehow fashion a, do another speaker to speak on this item?
She's next.
You're next. I, I recognize that you were, but I thought maybe you might want to come up and work on this one.
I've got 22 minutes left on my meter.
Oh, oh, okay, let's go.
Four times, so.
All right.
If we had that new app, you could be able to feed it again on your phone, it'd be real easy.
I spent all my lunch money tonight. All right, you ready for me?
Should we? Not quite. Motion to receive and file and?
Motion to receive and file and get a recommendation from the city engineer on a plan for this, and really, because I know the issue has been studied from a signalization perspective, and that may not be the right solution, so let's look at perhaps other traffic calming and traffic enforcement solutions and see, see what, what makes sense, because a lot of the, a lot of the issue is the speed and figuring out how to reduce speed. So, with that all.
I disagree. It's 258 people cross the street. It's not a speed issue.
It's not thinner lanes, I can tell you that.
You can't get across that street without knowing. It's, it's criminal. There's a park there, can't you be able to go to the park? My customers go across the street.
Well, we're, we're asking for recommendations, so.
Josh, you made the motion. Can, I see the chief here who's always got our back.
He had the speed camera there the last.
Oh, did we? That's what I was gonna suggest, so.
He had it sitting right there in the parking lot that Clark uses. Speed cameras out there a lot. Yeah. I would have it there on a regular basis, yeah.
Connie?
Yeah. And can I just weigh in, I think, too? The other thing he brought up, Mr. Way, and that neighbor, maybe, was the fact that one building, if you're coming up Davis, you really can't see to the right very well, so I think it really definitely needs to be re-looked at because of his business growth and probably news now.
And as you're going, as you're going north, that downhill, it.
What she's talking about is when you come up Davis.
Yeah.
Coming up the hall.
No, I know, I know.
You can't see anything.
It's tough to go left, I'll tell you that.
Yeah, it's dangerous to go left.
Well, yeah, no, then you're, you got those cars picking up momentum coming down that hill, it's.
It's a very, very dangerous one.
Seven yes.
All right. Item 48 was pulled, and so we're gonna move to item 49. Jenny, 2505, 47th Street, to speak regarding the Citizens Advisory Board status.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council.
And Frank, thanks for coming down.
Jenny Kleist, 2505, 47th Street. I initially got on the agenda for the Citizens Advisory Board status, however, after reviewing my materials from the Capital Improvement Infrastructure Committee, which I was a part of, one of our key recommendations was to have an oversight committee. I've reached out to Jonathan a couple times, and he referred to the Citizens Advisory Board. I'm not sure we're talking about the same thing. The Capital Improvement Infrastructure Committee was very specific that we wanted an oversight committee. I want to know the status of that. I want to know when we're gonna meet, what the scope of this committee will be, if it's going to be an appointment, or who will, will make up this committee. We had recommended somebody from Public Works, one of the civil engineers, and a finance person, and then several citizens.
Right, Jenny, I think that, it's my understanding that Jonathan Gano is gonna help out with this and, and serve on this. Is that correct, sir?
So, is that an oversight committee for the infrastructure? Because I think, it, it was my understanding that we were getting our own oversight committee, and I feel that with the magnitude of the storm sewer issues facing the city, that we should have our own committee, that it should not be a combined Citizens Advisory with all the other issues.
Is that all that you have, Jenny?
That's it.
Okay. Jonathan, you want to quickly?
I have 18 minutes left on my meter.
We'll be out of here in 18 minutes, for sure.
I hope so.
Jonathan's gonna be real brief.
How's the joke go? I'll be brief?
Yes.
Mayor, members of council, Jonathan Gano, Public Works Director. Yeah, we have a, a requirement imposed on us by the state of Iowa to stand up a stormwater advisory committee, and something that we have for several years been unable to do due to a lack of volunteers. We now have a surplus of volunteers that are very interested, so my intention is to limit the, the advisory capacity to storm sewers, rather than, you know, whole purpose advisory capital improvements, that's the whole host of, that would be the entire book, which would be way beyond, I think, the, both the interest level of the volunteers and the, the capacity of one department, since that's, six departments are involved in the entire, in the entire capital improvements plan. So the intention is to mail out invitations by the end of this week to those who have registered in interest, so we can do both, you know, the two birds with one stone of satisfy the, the feedback from the, the flood response after action report, all of the citizen committees, to have a feedback loop to the community, and also satisfy an element in our stormwater permit that's two decades old that we've never been able to satisfy.
Anybody have any questions? Very good. That was short. You were only one minute and 15 seconds, so it was good.
He's the bestest doctor here.
All right. Does somebody have a motion here?
Yeah, move, receive and file Jenny's comments.
Okay.
And refer any action to the city manager.
Thank you.
All right. Jenny, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for your patience.
Thanks, Jenny.
All right. Unless anybody has anything else, I think we've reached the end of the agenda, and thank you all for being here. This meeting's adjourned.